I can help with the roll call.
Six thirty-three if you would, yes.
Notice having to post it, roll call vote please. Jean Fox.
Here.
Sherry Barron.
Here.
Jennifer Blum.
Here.
Robert Clark.
Yep.
Will Sekowitz.
Here.
Steven Sylvia.
Here.
John Burke.
Here.
Also present, Mr. Strauss, Alan Strauss, Rick Medieris, our new Director of Student Services. Ashley Belay is joining us, as well as this is Dr. Pat Kowalski's last meeting, as well as Director of Strategic Structure.
Thank you. I see late cam's recording the meeting and due to the incredible attendance, I doubt anyone else's. Before we move on to everything else, the pledge and everything else, we have a little something for you, Dr. Kowalski. This is your last meeting with us and we thank you for quite a few years of hard work with us and pandemic fun and all the wonderful things that we has the district have done. Thank you so much. We really appreciate your help. Thank you. And on that note, let's do me for the pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And just put it out there, public participation. Acceptance of minutes from the June eight meeting. I'll entertain a motion. Thank you. Okay, so I had a, are we recording? Who's doing the motions? So Sherry made the motion.
I'll second.
And Steve, yes, he said the second. Any discussion?
I'm taking advantage of late cam having video for Mrs. Renee to review the tape for Mr. Strauss.
Duly noted.
Unless Mr. Strauss decides that is one of my own coming down.
Review the tape.
Well, we can at least sort of.
So we have them noted.
Okay, thank you. If there is no discussion, all in favor. Any opposed or there any abstentions? No, okay, what about the executive session minutes? Let's try to find. Probably on the back.
Do you need them?
Oh, you have a copy of them?
I have a copy.
Yeah.
This is just the regular. I think that's just the regular.
I do too. Yes, I have. All right.
Will we still hold them?
Don't add, no executive session.
I do not. I can't find them, so we'll table that for now if we could. Okay, our student reps are clearly not here, which is all good. We have number six presentations to the school committee, so they handle.
Mrs. Fox, thank you. I guess in a streamlined approach here for the last faculty, the last school committee meeting, for personal health slash other conflicts, both principals are not able to be here. It would be my recommendation that you accept the handbooks as presented tonight. If there are specific questions the committee has, there is a summary page explaining some of the, I'll describe as minor changes or edits from both the middle school and high school. As been in practice, we presented them. I certainly can refer any specific questions to Mr. Higgins or Mr. Zirk at a later date, get back to committee members that have concerns. I know he was in your packet. I have not received any questions, so with that absence, my recommendation would be to accept the handbooks as presented tonight.
I had sent an inquiry to Ms. Rodriguez, not knowing she was out.
Oh, I apologize, okay.
You know.
Regarding the middle school or high school?
Regarding the high school handbook.
John, do you want to just repeat that question?
It was just a correction for my own email address.
Oh, well, that's important.
I can forward it to you.
Oh, perfect. Oh, within the handbook itself?
Yes.
Yeah, but please do. I'll make note of that, John. We can, we'll make sure that's addressed.
Thank you.
Actually, that's a good catch, so.
Yeah.
All right, so the superintendent has proposed that we accept the handbooks, keeping in mind these can be modified if they need to be.
They're living documents that can be, if a topic comes up at any subsequent school committee meeting.
Exactly. But at least if they get this vote, they can check the box.
If you recall, if you go back historically, typically handbooks came in the fall, but to send to print, people have tried to move them forward in June and that's really kind of the logic behind it. But certainly this can be taken up in August, even before the first day of school if there was a specific question or item.
There will be.
Okay. Anyone want to make, oh, Sherry has a question.
I don't have a question. I just wanted to point out on page forty, last night at the diversity meeting, Mr. Davies stated that this particular piece was placed in the handbook because of one or more, I've forgotten, one or more students that came and wanted to talk about it, they worked together on it. It was a collaborative issue with the students and the staff. And I thought that was pretty impressive, so certainly.
They certainly have the kid's voice here.
Is that in regard to hate speech?
Yes, yes. We talked about that last night.
I'll make a motion to accept, thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Excellent. Any discussion? Keeping in mind that changes can still be made if you dive into it. All right, hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? Motion carries. Okay, we have budget update. Is that on you?
It is, it is on me. It's really on the Director of Finance, who provided a detailed summary. I don't know if there are specific questions or items relative to the 22 budget other than we are proceeding. I won't read the document that's provided. The assessment sheet is there. There have been no updates since the last meeting, as noted by Ms. Lee's appropriation. So we're basically taking that money and presenting it forward. I don't have any, if there are specific questions or items. Bottom line is, if you look at her report provided tonight, there have been no changes or updates since the last school committee meeting. For FY twenty-two.
Right. Questions? No, okay, great. We can move on to the COVID report and enrollment numbers for the school year 2023.
So B, COVID report, in front, at your place, I provide you what will be potentially the last report for this district as it relates to COVID. It's a one-page document that I put at your place tonight. That was not initial packet. It was right with the handbooks. I have another copy, Sherry, if you need one. I typically hold off until the night of rather than putting your packet because I'm giving you updated numbers. These literally reflect our current numbers with four remaining school days left. As you can see, generally speaking, about a third of the population, both students and staff throughout the course of the school year, tested positive. I think the most pleasant thing that I can share in relation to this piece, and you see the positivity rate within the community of 23 cases in Freetown and Lakeville, I think the, I think the real driving force behind the success of our district has been we have allowed this to be as minimally disruptive as possible to the learning process. And I think that's a tribute to the professionals, to the community working together. We're testing all of the mitigation strategies that we put in place. And so nice to see some sense of normalcy this spring brought back forward with all our activities. And I think we are, my, obviously, my, my very subjective opinion, I think this district has a lot to be proud of. I think we were on the forefront and to get our kids back in school safely and do the job we had. But these numbers reflect the most recent data. The state reports are coming to a close tomorrow. So what I'll have typically done for you folks, I'll give you that number. They are not reporting beyond that and they do not intend to supply tests and/or have reporting for the fall as we speak right now. So it looks like this would technically be the last report. I'll email you tomorrow night after the, after the dashboard numbers come out for both, for the both towns and update you there. I'd be happy to answer any specific questions. I don't have new enrollment numbers in relation to what I shared with you last time, which is not atypical in June. Clearly, in August, when Mr. Strauss takes over that school committee meeting, you'll be looking closely at those numbers because they'll be more accurately reflecting what you're going to see on the first day of school.
Questions? Thank you. And thank you for the constant and current reporting that you've done throughout this whole thing.
Thank you. So I mean, I would say the superintendents and actually Mr. Strauss, it has been a tremendous amount of work and effort in relation to reporting out.
Yeah.
And I may suggest, I'm not so sure the best use of some educators' time on occasion, but, but related to what the state required. But I'm pleased to see that we're, we're in a better place and moving forward. The numbers are up to date, they've been transparent, we've had the dashboard up. I'll do the end of the year numbers, which typically I think parents in the community will like to see, they don't see the sheet that you see here. And so they will see, they see the daily dashboard. I'll do a total at the very end on, and Alan carried over to the new website, which will be rolling out in July one, so they'll see what the total school numbers are. Not necessarily broken down by grade, but, but by school.
Overall, okay.
Thank you.
Great. The next item on the agenda is the Freetown vocational subcommittee. I don't know if Will is.
We don't have a specific item there, other than we did find out, we had a request today of the town of Freetown for a special town meeting on August fifteenth, which may potentially have an impact relative to the topic of Bristol Plymouth. We don't know that for a fact. That was not their intent behind the scheduling of the meeting. But they may, my understanding is some town officials are, I think, are considering potentially bringing that up.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's probably in our best interest to reach out to the board and see what they're thinking in regards to that. I think, I've said it all along, I think this, this vote's going to require a lot of education of the community to be able to make an informed decision on this. So I think, I think August fifteenth is probably a little bit rushed at this point. So I'll, I'll reach out to the board and talk to them this week and see what, where their head is at and how to proceed.
Yeah.
Likewise, we don't have another school committee meeting, so.
Till August twenty-fourth, yeah.
Till after that meeting. So it would require this group, if you recall, exploratory committee, the subcommittee, Jean Fox has been on that, Mr. Sekowitz as well. I have included, include this to Strauss in the conversation. But I agree, Will, I think we need to reach out and find out in fact if that's going to be an article at the special town meeting. It was not their intent as to have that meeting, but they may add it from what we understand.
Okay, well, let's get.
We can share with the board.
Get clarification on that because we do need to get out in front of that just to go to a meeting and tell people.
So a couple of nice things we have in place is our Director of Finance, who will help with our numbers, is a Freetown resident.
Also helpful and so is Alex, yeah.
Superintendent is also a Freetown resident. So we should have a cadre, a team in place to respond to any questions that would come up, even if it is, as Mr. Sekowitz, I don't disagree, I agree with him. Seems a little early in the process in relation to especially capital and the cost. But we'll, let's find out from the towns where they stand and we'll keep you folks updated.
Yep, thank you. The, we do have the second reading on the curriculum. We did get additional information. I think we all were grateful for that. Did you want to add?
Mrs. Fox, thank you. I just, I want to just thank Dr. Kowalski because I knew there was some confusion relative to the packet of information. And I do think the summary that she provided in email to you folks in relation to the various schools and levels, I think cleared up some of the confusion or concerns that was had. It would certainly be my recommendation to move forward with a vote tonight based on that initial additional information that was shared, subsequent meeting that happened and so forth. So I would fully support that.
And I thank you for that information too. That was very helpful.
Yes.
I think we were just rummaging through papers and trying to figure out what went where.
Yeah, exactly.
And didn't go. Couldn't find the connections, but so, so yeah, if, I could have a motion on that. Have a motion and a discussion.
We accept it.
Okay, I have a motion. Second, discussion.
So I just, I feel a need to at least explain a little bit about, I've had some staff members question me in the last couple of weeks on my views on this. And so let me just kind of explain to you and to whoever is listening where I'm coming from here. I see this process, and I have since last October, when I think it was first brought to us, as a very expensive, it's about a third of a million dollars. Long term, we know it's at least six years. And a foundation decision, which is going to affect our children throughout their career, because these are the little ones that are going to learn to read with this system. And so there was a lot of discussion through the winter. There was a fair amount of discussion through the winter. And as I listened and I tried to think about it back then, I was thinking it was sort of like buying a new car, family buying a new car. You know, it's a big, big price tag. We want to get it all right. And there were some people who wanted this and there were some people who didn't think the phonics part of it was very clear, strong, concrete for the littlest ones. We wanted to make sure that we bought this car that didn't have all the bells and whistles, but would be appropriate for everyone in the family, that being our ELL students, our children with special needs, our reluctant readers, our high achieving readers. And so I was getting a lot of mixed messages from staff members as they were piloting it. And then as we went on with it, there was some concern about the fact that we were bringing new administrative staff in. And with that new administrative staff, we want to make sure that we set them up for success so that they know the players, the curriculum, the teachers. So that's where I was coming from. I didn't mean in any way to make it negative. I just, I'm a firm believer, because I was in the classroom, that our practitioners are the ones that we should be listening to when we talk about curriculum. They're the ones that are going to be delving in, they're the ones that are owning it almost. It made a whole lot more sense, and you brought up the situation at the last meeting. It made a whole lot more sense when we got these letters.
Yeah.
And in particular, Mr. Ward's kind of outlined a little bit of what was discussed at the Zoom meeting that Mr. Strauss had and how it was going to be slowly rolled out and the phonetic part of it. It made a whole lot more sense. So I give it my blessing now that I have a whole lot of people here that are saying, yes, it's what we want. We want to do what our, what our teachers want us to do.
Right, and you're right, Mr. Ward did spell it out very nicely.
He did, he did, and an amazing job of it. So his, I think, was kind of the icing on the cake for me. And seeing, seeing these names and so forth, the practitioners in the classroom that are, are giving its blessing.
Excellent.
I'm all in.
Anybody else?
Just a comment too.
Sure.
And thank you for sharing that. And thank you, Dr. Kowalski, for the updated packet. But I really was impressed with the collaborative approach that was outlined at the meeting and the strong show of support by the building principals and curriculum leaders in the building with their endorsement. I think that meeting with that group happened, we had gotten the packet prior.
Correct.
That meeting happened after, which led to at least some of my confusion and then the packet, but the updates, it all makes sense. And I applaud you for your collaborative approach and especially the building leaders and curriculum leaders being at the meeting. I thought that was very helpful.
That was helpful.
So you certainly have my support.
Well, good, and we have a motion and a second on the table. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? Motion carries. Crisis averted. Crisis averted, that's right. Nobody really want to go back to square one? No. So new business is the FY twenty-three budget.
No updates since last meeting. Now I know why Dr., that Ms. Lee's felt confident that I could carry out her budget updates because there were no changes from the last meeting. She already answered that. I was feeling so confident that she had trust in me and then I realized there were no changes or edits, so I think that's a problem.
I'm sure she has trust in you.
I don't know if there are any specific questions, other than we'll be rolling out, obviously, purchase orders and Mr. Strauss will be signing off on them moving forward. So we're in a good place in relation. And obviously, as is typically this time of year, start certifying and taking a look at what E and D looks like and spending whether we're ready to do it this year and this year. I would say we, this is been the most solid year from a, from a financial perspective. And that's pretty impressive when you consider the last two years that we've had to go through. So have to answer any questions or at least refer those questions to the Director of Finance when she returns, or Mr. Strauss after July one, so.
Any questions? Okay, then we'll move on to the SRO agreement.
So we have a great relationship with the Lakeville Police. You see the agreement there. I just want to note, so we made, we tweaked the agreement, if you recall, in 2020 and made this adjustment per request of the Lakeville Police, which is, it's not required that a signature happens each year. The agreement needs to be reviewed annually prior to the start of the school year, which obviously we're doing tonight. This agreement remains in full force and effect until amended or until such time the parties withdraw. I am recommending that we continue to support this. Certainly a vote and action should be taken tonight in support, but I just want to know the agreement remains intact until you decide, choose these two. And certainly I know Lakeville Police feels strongly about maintaining that. And I believe it is my recommendation, our recommendation, that you support this for the upcoming school year as presented.
Questions or a motion?
Are there any changes from last?
There are no changes in the document from the year ago.
We're just doing our annual review.
Motion to support the SRO as presented.
Thank you.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? What? What? That's the signature page of.
Yeah, I know.
Okay, sorry. Yeah, let's see. Transition update, Mr. Strauss.
So I feel as if I live here and I live in Weymouth. Again, I'm going to start by saying I really appreciate the support of Superintendent Weymouth, who's given me the ability to come here. We were here all day yesterday. Tonight, tomorrow morning, I'll be at the last faculty meeting at AES. I've been in every school, have been at every faculty meeting. Last night, we had our DEI meeting. I think it might be important for Jen and Sherry to kind of give their perspectives. I thought that went very, very well. Rick and I, when Rick was able to do it, I met new candidates who, who are signing on as, as teachers so that they at least don't have to come back for another meeting with me. So Rick and I, you know, did it, did it together, which was incredibly positive. We're trying to do as much as we can in the next few days, although I'm very comfortable with, with what's going to happen over the summer and my meeting with community members, important community members with Rick. I, I think that it's gone about as well as it could have, considering I still work elsewhere. And I think we're way ahead of the game. Terry Fleming was here today interviewing. Terry and Ashley have been in contact. Ashley is, is doing a wonderful job. She's, I'm really excited for her to be able to start her position. It will be nice when we all have our focus in on one place and one thing. But, you know, what, the only thing that's going to come July first is unpacking boxes. But we're ready to go and, and we have a lot to do. I've been in constant communication with, with faculty and paras and community members, and that will just continue through the summer. So we're really excited. We, I, I said to you, I would, I would start working before July first, but I actually think we've gotten more done than I thought we would.
Good.
I can agree more. I think the district should be very proud of the seamless transition that's taken place. A lot of districts, when you look at the multiple positions that you had built, this district is up and running, ready to roll July one without gaps and/or peace. You know, Alan referenced the fact that we kind of had a little joke. So normally when a candidate comes to the superintendent, it's the, they made it through the hard part, they went to a search committee. Now the poor folks had to come in front of, not one superintendent, but two superintendents and had to kind of leave it up. But it was a good op, it was really Alan's request to kind of make sure that people didn't have to come back, which was great. We're going to continue to work through in the coming days. And then obviously, I'll work with the administration. But I think the district has a lot of exciting things to look forward to.
New website is up and running July first, which will be a huge shift. And we're really excited about the social media presence and the communication that we will be putting out from, and it will be consistent. It will be the same all the way across the board. It will look the same, it will feel the same. We haven't decided who's going to take on what roles, but it's going to filter from superintendent down because we need to streamline the process for parents who have kids in multiple schools. And, and so we need a, I can get to AES and I can get to GRAZE and I can get to the high school information quickly. And you can't do that right now on our website. So, so we're really excited about that.
Alan referenced just another example of this smooth transition. Just tweaked something relative to our extended school year program, which starts after the, after the Fourth of July and is Monday through Thursday program. But our academic program, which starts several weeks later, is Monday through Friday.
Yep.
So through working with Alan and getting back to the principals and with the help of Dr. Kowalski and Ashley, we've mirrored those for the first time. So they'll be Monday through Thursday programs to help out parents in the community. Expanded the Friday session to be a half hour each day. Did that through some virtual meetings that we had with the principals. And I think the community really benefits from that. That doesn't impact the before, you know, the, the summer can't cap, cafe. But our academic programs are now lined up on the same days for those folks that have multiple children. And that was really Ashley, Pat, Alan and the principals taking a look at that. So that type of stuff wouldn't happen with a new superintendent coming in if you didn't do some of the front loading work.
The other thing that we've started, which was actually at your request, was a one-size-fits-all calendar. So that, again, if, if a parent has a child at AES and their promotion is today and there's something else going on at GRAZE, we can't do that. And, and so we have to be very careful as to what we are planning when, including your favorite breakfast for seniors and, you know, all of those things. We need to be ahead of the game to put them onto the calendar so everybody knows right from the beginning. So there's, I'm not saying it's going to be perfect when you have sports, when you have all of those things, that we have no control of. You want all your teams to go to state, so therefore something else is happening. But in terms of what we can control, we are on top of that and we will be controlling the calendar.
I see a paper coming out, being published about how to transition smoothly.
Yeah, it's been fantastic.
Got all the data.
It's been fantastic.
So thank you.
And I appreciate it.
Both of you for all of that. And I know.
And Pat too.
Pat, and I'm sure Ashley, you're all part of that too, so. Yeah, thanks.
And just had a little humor in our last meeting. Gress is, Alan was coming in the office today, would have been a, a good photo op. He was trying to get the door open carrying a box and I was taping a box in my office as I went to open the door. So it was ironic, we were trying to do some things after hours, so.
Pat's been very helpful to Terry Fleming, who was here today. Two of you interviewed someone and, but also just working on curriculums and answering information. So it's been about as good as it can be.
Excellent. Any questions? Thank you. Director of Finance.
So we kind of touched upon that. She just shared some information relative to the ASWAMCIT project continues to move forward with a timeline for schematic model. Town officials have been involved and, and they're starting to look at some additional numbers, but that hasn't been finalized officially yet. But it looks very much on target as, and, and all the parties have been working cooperatively on that piece. The other is that she just gave an ESSER re-update on the back page of that piece. That is not a change from the last meeting. Great.
Question?
While we're talking about Karen, has she mentioned, or Pat, would you happen to know, have the Perinthium boards been ordered?
Yes, they have.
How do you pronounce it?
Prometheus.
Prometheus. Oh, as in Prometheus. Yeah, got it.
Yeah, yes, they've been ordered. The boards that the Special Ed Department bought came in already. Because we were using a federal ESSER grant, we had to jump through a few more hoops. So our boards took a little bit longer to get, but they've been ordered[1743.31] more hoops. So our boards took a little bit longer to get, but they've been ordered and they've started to come in.
Excellent. One more question.
Yes?
And one more question. How are we doing with the, the posting of the math specialists? Has anybody been applying?
The math interventionist positions.
That's been posted internally.
Internally, has not gone out to?
Hasn't gone to school spring yet. It's internal posting.
There is interest, internal.
There is interest.
Yeah. So, so based on the conversation that kicked started here, we went back to the principals and spoke to them about clarifying for existing individuals because we, and Alan and I had this conversation, not preaching too much confidentiality. We do have some existing talented staff members that have expressed interest in, that's a win-win if you get some folks who have expertise in the area and can do that. Because typically when you're looking at grant funded positions, new positions, you get new staff. And I'm not saying I'm saying along with young teachers in first year, but, but Mrs. Barrett, to your point, that was kind of kickstarted here. We are seeing all three of the buildings, interest from existing staff. We'll still obviously could proceed with our posting process and, and look at that. But I've been encouraged, the association has been reassured that those people remain solid. I think that was the biggest issue that the union, association asked about, which was if they take a grant funded position in the event that year or two down the line, would they lose that status? And the answer simply is no. Like we routinely over the years, a lot of districts have funded union positions in different mechanisms, right? In some instances, I would say some teachers don't even realize that, right? But so they're not losing that. And I think that was a relief for some folks who might express some interest. So both, both Mr. Strauss and actually my conversation with Terry Fleming today was in regard to that. And she was, and Terry was pretty pleased to hear that. Obviously she's in these now dialogue with principals about what's the best fit. But we are seeing some initial interest internally. We're only seeing it internally, Sheri, to Alan's point, because we haven't actually rolled it out to school spring yet, which will be covered.
That's good.
Yep.
That's good news.
I have one more question.
I thought so. I saw it.
Any chance we're getting those boards for the math specialists? Since we didn't even think about them when we ordered. We ordered for the two elementary schools in Grace.
Right. But they'll be in classrooms and we ordered one for each library for any specialist to be able to log out. And they're on, they're on wheels so they can take them wherever they're providing the services. But if they're providing service in classrooms, the board will be there.
But.
But no, we didn't know anything. We didn't know there were math specialists.
So we will look at that.
But this was a preliminary rollout. So the hope was that in the following year you'd add more, you know what I mean? As the interest built.
I just didn't like to have carriages weigh in. As I remember, they were $2,000, $2,500 a piece.
Oh, they're about, they're almost $4,000 a piece with, with the stand, you know?
Okay. If we have any ESSA money, we could just have a discussion on that anyways and see what they want to when you finally determine.
Absolutely.
Which one of our folks are going to do it. Thank you.
So we don't have anything from you, Dr. Kuplinsky, huh?
Yay. I have said everything over the last three years and I think, I think that you want to hear from me.
But I, if I may, Mrs. Fox, I just would like to, and you've done that at the start of the meeting, just to commend and thank Pat for coming on board. Sheri was part of the initial process, if I remember correctly, search committee to bring Dr. Kuplinsky and the Talents. We had talked for some time about having elementary as a, a focus and a priority and certainly Pat from our Talents in Rhode Island has shared that and offered that. And I think as Alan has alluded to, has been very helpful in making the transition from Dr. Korea to Dr. Kuplinsky and now to Ms. Fleming. So I thank Pat. We've had a great working relationship and.
It's been, it's been a great team.
To do that. So.
Yeah. It's been, it's been really, really, really good being part of this team, even through pandemics and all of it. Yes.
I mean, I think, and I just, they add grossly, I think a lot of folks grossly underestimate the work Pat did behind the scenes relative to technology and the remote and the hybrid piece and the work. Think about it, that we did with the, I can't believe I can't think, Pat, the, the DESI site that we had to do for remote learning, TECHA.
Well, we, 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 well, we would never say that word.
We did say we weren't going to use that word again, TECHA. But again, it took, it took a lot. It really required districts to pivot. And she was instrumental in helping principals and bring technology in and, and look at the Chromebooks and look at where we've come. So I, I want to thank Pat personally and professionally for the work. And I know the committee's already recognized her, but thanks for the opportunity.
And while we weren't hands-on and watching everything you do, I think we were very cognizant of the fact that it was an uphill battle. It was changing every day, but you rose to the occasion. So thank you very much for your service. That was great because not easy.
I think directors sometimes, so like assistant principals, they always see like officials, right? You don't really recognize them until they don't do their job, right? They make a bag. It's the truth, right? The reality is they're behind the scenes making sure things are functioning and running. Like an umpire, right? You're not really talking about an umpire until that one call that cost your team. And so I think in some ways that's the case. They allowed me for these past three years and for my eight years to get out. And I know Alan's excited about that opportunity, allowing me to be flexible because I was confident that they were doing what they needed to do back at the office. So.
So I did notice that sports analogy just happened to come up.
Had to slide that.
I'm not going to do it, but I did, I do want to take a moment to reflect on your eight years with the district. And it's been a real adventure, but you rose to the occasion. You have been visible in our schools, in our community, at our meetings, at our sporting events. Because we know I'm a sports fan. Everything, everything, every function, every event, you were there. And I, I think we all truly appreciate that because we've learned from, Bob and I have been here way too many years, we've seen what that means to people, to students, to families, to people who aren't even engaged in the schools, to know that superintendent is out in the community making connections and making real connections. This is not superficial. This was genuine. That's how you are. The kids respected you and loved you and told you where to go all the time. Come on, you've got to go see the parade. Because they had a parade at Freetown for the 4th of July T-shirt winner. And, and they dragged you out to that. But you always did that with a smile and willingness and still managed to go back to the office and get the rest of the work done, including COVID reports. So with all of that, thank you sincerely for eight wonderful years for this district. I couldn't thank you more. And I'm sure everybody wants to say something. And we'll start with Will.
Yeah, I almost feel like it's an end of an era a little bit, huh? Just, I can't thank you enough. The continuity you brought over the last eight years. Just, again, Jean said it all, right? Being in the community, being out there, being visible. I don't think there was one parent that ever did not receive a, a phone call back from me or an email back from me that reached out. I'm always accessible. But I do think your, your legacy is going to be the last three years here navigating the district through the pandemic. I truly do. I don't think there are many districts that handle it better than us. And it's a testament to you and your leadership. So I wish you nothing but the best for retirement. Stick around. Don't be a stranger. Maybe we can pull you in as a sub here or there.
I'm sorry to.
I would love that.
But, but thank you.
Depends on the grade level, but yeah, I made that reference, but thank you.
But, but thank you.
Pat?
Yeah, well, I think I looked up something in, in 2018. I mean, I'm sorry, in 1918, I forget the author, but he wrote a song called "A Good Man Is Hard to Find." And if I could modify that a little bit and say a good superintendent is hard to find. And this board, if you've been on it for a while, you know that's true, that it is hard to find a good superintendent. And you more than fill the bill. And, you know, I'm kind of a wise guy sometimes, but not this time. Thank you for all you did for this district. It really made a difference. And.
Thank you, Bob.
Thank you.
Sheri?
Yeah, without a doubt, this has been a great ride under your leadership. And, you know, so I think we all are in awe sometime of your, your integrity, your organization, your punctuality. You just, you fit every bit of it to a T. We are definitely a better school district. And I'm going to say it, and I've said it before, maybe not publicly, but 19 superintendents I've had so far. You are the 19th. And you're number one, as far as I'm concerned. You have been, you've done everything that you possibly could. Maybe not everybody liked what you did, but you did it because you thought it was the right thing to do. So thank you.
Yeah, I, this is, it's been great. I mean, we share the same career on some, some level. I mean, you're, you're the superintendent, but I've only been here for half of your tenure and you don't see superintendents stay in districts for, for the time you did. And you did it with Grace. You did it with professionalism. And then I speak as a parent. I was always confident in sending my kids to this school and it was your leadership is the, the main reason why. I think you're right. Your legacy sadly and positively is the pandemic. And, and you showed your communication skills, especially in some of these meetings, was top notch. And, and I think you put everyone at ease. You took every issue head-on and it was, I was proud to be part of this district. So thank you.
And you spearheaded so much. I mean, I came on at the beginning of the pandemic. So just watching you really take our leadership role and making sure that we were ahead of the game and everything, I think that was huge for our district and for other districts to be able to follow. So great job. Thank you.
John?
Not a lifelong resident myself. You know, you were the only superintendent I've dealt with here. You know, your first year superintendent was my first year, you know, with children in the district. You know, I interacted with you first as a parent. You know, I've interacted with you as part of a PGO in, in some of the different schools here. And now as a school committee member, you know, and, and you've been the same person each time, you know?
Yes.
I was glad for that.
I think we all are. So I mean, I'm really glad that you're going to be popping around.
Yeah, we still, you still have to delay me a little bit. We, thankfully are supporting a process where we can continue this transition. I'll help Alan. I think that the district is in great shape. I was excited. I sat there. I know someone, you'd be shocked that I sat through a meeting an hour and 20 minutes last night, DEI, and I think Mr. Strauss and Mr. Barrett didn't say a word.
Not one word.
Not even a word.
Not one word.
So, so.
And you sat in the back.
As some would say that, they weren't even sure that was even possible, but it was. But what it, what it really said is how good I felt about where we've come as a district and what I heard and saw and how good I felt about where it's headed. That's really the, the emphasis. It's, you know, a lot of things you've touched upon. I think of, actually to, to keep my focus in that, have a tear, I was thinking of different things as you were sharing it that were more colorful in nature relative to the start of the pandemic and getting a couple of calls on the Saturday when the governor was first making, I won't mention the school board members saying, are you paying attention to the news at that point? Because it was that, the infancy of it.
Yeah.
So, I mean, a lot of those things have really brought a lot of smiles and joy to my face. That, I was at Grace today for the Survivor Day. And so, I mean, the kids keep it in perspective. Bob, I mean, listen, I, I, these have been the best eight years of the 35 years in education that I can say. So I'm leaving, as anybody would want to leave, as they move to another chapter or whatever that work is, feeling good. Nothing worse than how many times have we seen people in the organization like disgruntled, not happy, walking away. That's absolutely not the case here. And then to be a little, to be humorous about it, as I was leaving Grace, they were giving me all sorts of signs. Couple of kids came up to me and said, we're going to miss you. And one kid just turned to me as only a child could do and just said, have a good life. And I wasn't sure if it was the sarcastic tone or what. It just was, but it, but it was good that kids feel comfortable enough. I think that's something Alan and I have talked about, that, the fact that's genuine. Listen, you get involved in a lot of things here. And that's what's so great about the district. These communities have a lot to be proud of. I'm looking forward to seeing some, some future activities, future meetings, athletic, maybe a turf field along the way at some point, some, some event that comes, takes place. And, no, I, again, I thank you for everything. It doesn't really feel like the end right now, so I'm probably good about that. We're trying to finish up a school year. There's a lot of exciting activities going on. You've referenced some of those. We honored bus drivers today. That makes me feel good, right? The fact that I think for the most part, I'd like to think in my eight years, I've been able to connect with every constituent. In some instances, maybe not given the answer they want to hear, but but timely. And whether it be a bus driver, a custodian, a teacher, an administrator, I think they felt that I was respectful and, and listened to what they had to say. And we saw a little bit of that today because, listen, who's bringing the kids every morning and, and taking them home at the end of every day? What a great piece. But it's been, it's been a crazy ride these last couple of years for all of us. This board has a lot, I mean, you have some challenges ahead of you, right? There's some initiatives that, that are trying to break communities. And so if I were leaving any message, sometimes I used to ask the top 10. I, I wouldn't have been in the top 10, by the way. I digress. But if I were permitted to have that speech, it would be, that has been the strength of this board, that you guys have been united and done what was best for kids. And I think if you continue to maintain that and you're going to get pushes from different groups about that, this district is going to be just fine. And, and I will say that having come from areas and you can talk of politics and so forth. I think if you stay focused on and do what you think is best for kids, and that's what I really pride myself on. I didn't say I had, I had the right answer all the time. But I could generally go home and get in the car and say, that decision was what I believed was in the best interest of kids with a lot of support. Don't, I think it's so important that, that Alan has that same support from this board across the board, you know, kind of tended with everybody. And I, and I know he has that. And I think that's been part of the process. We want this place to be successful. We built it up. I've made a lot of reference to raise the bar. There, I, it was intentional there, right? I didn't walk into a dysfunctional community. You know, Freetown, Lakeville thought a lot about their kids and took care of their schools. And I knew that. But I thought, well, but you know what? This is going to be a learning experience. And if we can take it to another level, which I think we have done, it's just going to be a, you know, that much more. So thank you.
Thank you.
That's the two seconds that I always say is seven, which turns into like nine.
It's fine.
That's why it's so surprising that I didn't say anything last night. I had a cup. I did, Jen was there, Sheri was there. And, but, but thank you. I appreciate it. Still have to tolerate me for a little bit of timeframe. I'm going to be selective about how I help provide some support in the background and excited to see some of the kids and the progress that's happening.
We're, we're looking forward to seeing you crossing paths again. So the last day of school is the 27th.
It's Monday. It's an early dismissal day for students.
Yes.
That's out.
Great. It's great.
Is there any other business? Yes, Sheri?
Yes, taking over with Steve Owen. I hope he's watching right now. We're all talking on. I just, since we're not going to meet again until late August, I am the alternate for MAS C as far as the assembly that they do in November from November 1st through the 5th. Bob is the primary folk, folks that can go to that association meeting. It's down in Hyannis. It's well worth it. I can't go this year or I don't think I'm going to be able to go. So I'm putting it out there now. I have the conference information here. I'm happy to scan it and send it to you if you're interested, anybody. And Bob, I just want you to know that you're on your own this year.
Not necessarily. We may find.
I think, I think it would be beneficial for the newest member of the committee.
I do too. All kinds of nice sessions. It really is good.
It is. It's worthy.
It's excellent. They do a fantastic job.
And I guess this year they are combining it with the Massachusetts Association of School Superintendents. Looks like it's.
When is it? 11th through 14th.
November 1st through November.
They've been, the last few years, they've been, they've been combining those events. Even those MAS has their separate.
Which makes sense.
We have, it does. We haven't gone because of COVID, I think.
Yeah. They didn't have a lot.
Oh, oh, that's why we didn't go.
Here we go. So if anybody would like this, I'd love to be able to share it with someone.
So please someone step up to the plate on it. It really is beneficial.
Shall I just email it out?
Why don't you do that?
Yeah, just email it out.
And everybody can read it, read what the itinerary is. And it's a wonderful time too.
Stay away from the buffet.
No, the buffet's good. All right. If there's no other business that may come before the meeting, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'd just like to talk a little bit about last night's meeting.
Oh, if you would, that would be super.
Yep. Sheri and I were both there along with Mr. Madaris and Mr. Strauss. And it was really great to see the amount of parents that were there and the amount of students that were there. I'm hoping that that grows. And I think over time that it will. And I think it's going to be a great program involving. I like how we're going to be involving the parents and the students. And I think that is super important because their voices is what we need to hear. And I think moving forward, it's, it's really going to be great and very beneficial to this community and our schools.
I'm so glad.
Me too.
No?
No. It was good evening last night.
Well, and thank you for making that happen.
I will say that Mr. Davey and Mr. Ward did an outstanding job.
Absolutely.
As hosts for the evening.
You can tell they're very committed to this.
Yes.
And I like that.
Good. That's progress.
Yep.
We need to see progress. So thank you for that. Thanks. I appreciate that. I'll now entertain a motion to adjourn.
Snowpoot.
Okay, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you all.